Good. I'm calling the meeting to order. I have to start by reading the remote participation script if you'd be patient with me. The open meeting of the Town Auburn Library Board of Trustees is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, which disclaims the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations due to the state of emergency due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is reported so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure participation unless such participation is required by law.
Here my webcam.
Okay, the public can join the meeting remotely by telephone, and the telephone number and web address is on the agenda. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along to the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, this is Mary Decourcy, Chair of the Board of Trustees. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on our agenda are present and can hear me. Matthew Toth?
Present.
Suzette Dowd?
Present.
Jennifer Shea? Paula Melikin?
Present.
Excellent. Nan Johnson?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jean Collins, library director?
Present.
Excellent. Do you have anyone else that you've invited to the meeting, Jean, that you want to introduce?
No, I do not.
Okay. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Also, please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. How was everyone tonight?
Good.
Good day.
How are you?
Great. I apologize for the beginning. That's the first time in my life that happened, that I wasn't able to get up at this time. So this is the first time for everything. Can we start with the approval of the minutes from July 8 and then September 9?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as they are.
Excuse, I'd like to make a comment about a couple of items in the minutes, please.
Sure.
Just, I want to make some fact-based clarifications on a couple of things because it is a public document, and I want to make sure that library is perceived in the most favorable light. Under where it says children's librarian, to guide good quality selection of books and media and so forth, I want to make sure that it's understood that we actively collect materials from many different award winners, and I have a whole listing of them here. So that is being done. I want to make sure the public isn't making an assumption that good collection development isn't happening because we don't have a quote "children's librarian" the way it's listed here. And you're welcome to ask me any questions you like about that. But we did an analysis, actually a couple of them. The last one, when we assessed, I think, six different award winners, we had 63% of those books, and that's a pretty high number for a library our size. So we actively collect books in those categories. The other one that I wanted to...
What are you going to make?
Pardon me?
What change do you want to make in the plan?
I don't want to make any change. That's somebody's comment. I would just like some clarification there, since it's now in the public document. We can't, I'm not making any changes. I just want an addition there, in case it's misunderstood that the library, because we don't have a library, children's librarian the way it's addressed here, that we do select good quality materials. So the other one that I...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm responding to it because that's still, when I was involved in this, and I understand now you're not asking to change the minutes, you're asking to make a clarification.
Right. Correct. Thank you. The other one, too, is under volunteers, because I wouldn't want the public to think that we're not responsive to requests from high school students. I have never, ever turned down a high school student who was looking for some kind of volunteer, you know, either for scholarships or for extra credit or any of that. And there haven't been a lot of them, but I have never turned down a student. And I just want to make sure that the public isn't reading as is that we're not supporting high school students from Auburn, because we do. I can't speak to directors before me, but my understanding is that they did as well. So I've never turned anyone down. I've always found something for them to do, and signed the paperwork, and, you know, conducted all that officially. So I just want to just make sure that's clear, that we do support that. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that if I could, because I think before we approved the minutes, there needed to be clarification on my part with that particular vote, because I wasn't supportive of the decision to remove information from the public's eye. And I believe that what you just referenced, Jean, in reference to the children's librarian and librarians, I believe that was coming from the strategic plan, and it was commentary that you objected to in that meeting. And when it came to the vote, I have to be honest, I objected because I had issues with what I felt was censorship, that if, in fact, whether it was me or another member of the community has feedback regarding what they would like to see, I would like us to have that transparent to everyone. So responding to your question about the first piece, I can't respond about the volunteers because I, to be honest with you, I can't recall that particular item. But I know with this one, we decided that rather than continue a contentious debate, we believe it's unnecessary to remove the words of patrons and residents, and we asked for a motion to remove things. I objected because I wanted them to be part of the feedback from the community.
I'm not objecting to the words there? No, I'm not objecting at all. I'm just clarifying something, in case it's misrepresented. I think that the board as well certainly would be favorable to everybody to have the library perceived in the best favorable light, as opposed to potentially seeing it as negative. I'm not opposing, I'm not trying to censor anything. And issues of transparency, this is my effort in this case. Transparency is served by also making a comment that we do, in fact, very professional collection development. So I'm certainly not asking to, I'm not, that's all part of everything. I'm not questioning that. I'm just making a fact-based clarification, that's all.
Okay. Can I, before we move on?
Correct?
That's correct.
Sorry?
A piece that I neglected to, in the absence of Jennifer, I wondered if I could have someone be the note taker. I apologize that I didn't say that already. I hear the feedback in my ear.
I can hear it.
Can I have some to take the notes?
I'll take the notes.
Okay. Is that you, Nan?
It's Suzette. Oh, it was me.
I'm sorry. I can't, it's not real time. Your lips are not matching your voice. So does anybody want to respond to the piece about librarians? I mean, I'm sorry, volunteers, I meant to say.
The only thing I would say about volunteers is that we've been prohibited from using that word unless we want to create tensions. So that's, and I think that's why it was excised from the document, because, for the strategic plan, because that came up in several different places. But it was taken out, and that's why it happens to be here, but it was removed from the strategic plan.
Right, but it's now part of an official document again, so I just wanted to clarify that, because now it's, if it's in the minutes, it's now part of it, which is fine with me. I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear for people who the public, you know, publicly posted, and I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, we weren't, you know, turning any students away. I've never done that, never, not once.
So if a high school student wanted to volunteer, they could do that?
If it's based on something, usually it's a one-time, or sometimes it's a couple of visits, and they need something for college application or anything, they need to come and see me, and I've never turned anyone away. It's different from a long-term volunteer position from the public. This is student-based, and we work as closely as we can with students. There's no official program, but students would come to see me. And again, it hasn't happened a lot, but I've never turned anyone away. So it's not a volunteer position in the usual sense, but I always do support them. So I just wanted to make sure.
Adults cannot volunteer.
Correct.
That's correct. Adults cannot.
Correct.
Okay, adults cannot volunteer. Does anybody have any more comments? Before I have a motion, make a motion to approve the minutes. So can I have a motion to...
Mary, I just have a question.
Sure.
So your statement in here, after it says, "Mary Decourcy opposed with the same consideration", you would not have that with the same consideration. What are you going to say?
Oh, I see. So just that I was not in favor of the vote, because I wanted the comments to be transparent.
Of removing anything?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
No, thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is that one, Matt? And who's, can I have a second motion?
I make a second motion.
Paula. Okay, great. Very good. Roll call to accept the minutes. You just need my script over here. Matthew Toth?
Yes.
Do you accept the minutes? Yes.
Yes.
You got it?
Yes.
Great. Paula Melikin?
Yes.
Very good. Nan Johnson?
Yes.
And Jennifer is absent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Very good. So can we review the minutes from September 9?
I don't seem to have those. I don't have a copy of those either.
I don't have those either.
Oh, you don't have September 9?
They were in the packet that Jean gave us. It said July 8, the vote on the minutes were in there.
They were?
Yes.
Take a minute.
Yes. They're stapled together.
I couldn't find mine either.
It's at the back or the front, whatever you want to call it. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Okay? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the September 9, 2020 minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the September 9 minutes.
Great, thank you, Paula. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Matt. Roll call to approve the September 9 minutes. Matthew Toth?
Yes.
Approved? Yes. Suzette Dowd?
Yes, approved.
Yes, approved.
Paula Melikin?
Yes.
Nan Johnson?
I'll have to abstain. I didn't have my copy available.
Okay. And Jennifer is absent. Okay. Very good. Next on the agenda, I'd like to review the bill schedule. Can I hand it over to you, Jean?
Sure, I usually, everybody has a copy. If you have a question about anything, I'm happy to address it. It feels like a long time ago that we did this bill schedule. Anybody have any questions?
No. Oh, I know. Jean, there was a Reinstein payment.
Yes.
Did we get credit for that, as he's got to reschedule?
No, he held the meeting.
Did he? Oh, just for that few people, that was one that I wasn't...
It was the night of this, right after that storm, and people were still, some people still didn't have power. I know that I actually kind of got disconnected too, but he still did present.
Okay. It was I who couldn't connect, then?
I got locked out, too.
How many people were able to get through? Enough to make it worth his while, I hope?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
And that's one of a series, so I hope that all of you maybe can find time. There are three more. We did a series, the next one, I believe, is next Thursday. I'll be sending out the promotion probably tomorrow or Friday for that one.
We'll try again.
So any other comments about the director's report, Jean?
No, I'll go through it quickly, just because sometimes I put some bullet things that I can explain a little more. Can everybody hear me okay?
That'd be great.
Okay. So mentioned before, we did have a Mary Moon ceiling leak. The leak seems to have stopped. We haven't repaired the ceiling yet because we're having trouble finding some matching ceiling tiles, because we had just replaced all those. So we're still looking into that. I did request, this is all under facility, by the way, the public area fan is extremely loud. I keep looking to see if there's anything we can do about that. So far, no luck. We had the annual inspection for the rooftop units. Pretty much everything was okay, except there was a leak that was fixed, so we're pretty much good to go, hopefully again. That's pretty much it for, you know, for the facility under here. Curbside pickup, we average, and I haven't, at the time, we were averaging about 100 items a day, and most of our items are picked up within a day or two. After one week, we do courtesy calls for anybody who either forgot or was on vacation, and that number is very, very low. It's less than a handful, so everybody's, you know, very grateful for it, and see a lot of repeat people putting more items on reserve, and it's working very smoothly. The outside book drop, I don't know if any of you've seen it, but as you can see, a little bit of paint. Probably should have done it a long time ago.
Wonderful. Really. Really, really an improvement, yeah.
Yeah. So inside, too, we had some issues with the sink over there. It was pilling up the linoleum around the sink. And then, of course, as plumbing issues go, we had to also fix some of the elbow plumbing underneath, so we took care of that. Looks much better. The cabinets, they're not new cabinets, it's just a coat of paint, same hardware, and the linoleum on top, so certainly looks a lot better, and now the sink's not leaking either. Under programs, we just talked about Ted Reinstein. We've done a fall mini reads program, Halloween. I'll talk about that a little bit more at the next meeting, because it's still ongoing. We worked really hard putting together a lot of the literacy packets that go with it, where upwards, we've done this over the last two weeks, and we've handed out more than 70 literacy packets. And when I last checked the page views for the reading, because we have all the readings up there, more than 500 page hits to listen to the stories read by staff that go along with the literacy packets. So, you know, I think a lot of people are, you know, logging in twice, they're happy to see, you know, the library staff, so I'm really happy that the way, you know, when everybody's, I'm actually surprised, everybody's in front of screens so much, children are in front of screens all the time, so we're planning one for Thanksgiving, probably not as many as we did over the course of two weeks, because that was a little intense, but it was definitely worth it. Reports and grants, I'm probably, I'm trying to get started with writing my cultural council grants. I haven't started yet, and I'm not sure with the clarifications. Diane Spanos contacted me just to clarify which grants we could still use, and we actually had used most of them, and a few of them, I kind of rewrote the presentation parameters, which they agreed to, so there's really, most of those, we were able to, the last one, and now it's time for the next grant round, so I'm getting ready to write those.
TV, oh, wonderful.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Nan. What? I didn't hear...
Oh, Will just walked into the room, and he said, "We are on TV."
The capital improvement plan, when I had sent everything out to see if anybody had any suggestions, and nobody did, Nan, and asked me a few questions, I did put in $10,000 to have the electrical mapping. It doesn't involve replacing anything electric, but there is, there are quite a number of circuit boxes and all kinds of things that whenever they come over to do anything, it's kind of a guess to see what goes to what. So that's in there anyways. Again, that's not going to happen this year, that's in capital improvement. The ARIS report is attached, so after I finish this, if you have any questions about ARIS report. I also sent you a copy of the Fall Newsletter, the library portion. I attached that, so I won't go over it. Bill schedules, state aid has now been completed and submitted, and I'll have a copy of that for the next week, for the next meeting. The MBLC Trustee Reorganization Listing, so I went in and changed that from Matt, who was Chair, to Mary, and I believe, and I could go back and double-check, I think that you have to check on the website for the town as well. I think Matt might still be listed as Chair, so you might want to just check the town card. I don't know if there's something you have to submit to her formally, or fill something out, I'm not sure. But I did change it with the MBLC, so we're all set with that one. And that's it for that. And so the ARIS report is part of it. Does anybody have a question about the ARIS report?
Matt, do you have a question?
I have a, yes, I have a question on the director's report. I'm just wondering, I've had a couple of questions from people about when they appreciate curbside pickup, but when will there be any Saturday hours possible so that people who are working might be able to order books and be able to access them, because the eighth report doesn't work very well?
Well, I would suggest, I would encourage you to have those people call me. I have met a number of people at 7:00 AM who are on their way to work and can stop and pick up. We sometimes stay later. Also, they don't, since you don't have to show a card to be checked out, a lot of people send a family member to pick up the materials, so that's not, it's not been a problem. We've literally put out thousands and thousands. We had one issue where somebody picked up a DVD by mistake. So if the person can't get there, they can send somebody else. We've not had any issues with that. I don't know if you logged into the town meeting last night, the special town meeting, the library's budget has been cut by about $80,000, and so we don't have, we don't have staff to add any hours, and I don't know when that would be. But I strongly encourage anybody who has any questions to contact me directly, and I'm happy to have a conversation with them. It may be we would deliver it, I mean, there are some other things that we could do besides opening, you know, for one or two people to pick up materials. So I'm happy to work with them if you want to give them my contact information.
When would we see a revised budget for us? Or have they done that already?
Well, it's already been done. I mean, the budget cuts were approved last night at special town meeting, not just for the library, for other departments as well. It's looking, you know, it's going to be probably a couple of years of very lean budgets. We expected that. You know, it is, it is what it is. So that, obviously, that has an impact. The state recognizes that, just as a sort of added comment. Every library has cut hours, pretty much. I mean, there might be a few, but mostly, all of them have cut, all of them have budget cuts. The state has rescinded the requirement for operating hours, which used to be 51 hours a week for us. We were always open 54.5. 40 hours is perfectly acceptable. They don't encourage anybody to open at this time, and they are fully aware, and we're not out of compliance by not being open the number of hours that we used to be. It's just not possible. I was just talking to a director today who had tried to let a few people in, they shut right back down again. They can't, they can't do it because of, you know, too few staff members, so. And ours was cut, you know, that's two full-time staff members that were cut, so the positions weren't cut, the budget is...
Are those jobs that are not filled, because we have four openings?
That's correct.
So not, that haven't been filled, two of them out of the four were eliminated.
Well, there were three open ones and a couple of part-time ones, but currently, it didn't affect anybody on staff, so.
Oh, that's good.
Any other questions or comments?
I was trying to find my notes on, I was trying to find the notes on the ARIS. It lists a number of places, the credentials of people in the library, and I'm trying to figure this out, in the different places, it doesn't say the same thing. It looks like there's one person with a library science degree, one other graduate degree, and no bachelor degrees.
You might be looking under...
I know, I saw.
Maybe I'm in the, yeah, I'm looking in the second page.
Yep, under bachelor's, okay, so there, let me just look. First, remember that this was completed before July 1st, so there was somebody with a master's in library science, oh, there were two of us at the time, and this is...
That before Havel left, July 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
And, let me see, I have to just make sure I'm looking in the right category. The software, it's only the second year in the software. What you see on the page is not what I see on the screen, and it's frankly kind of difficult, but everybody does have a bachelor's degree who currently works at the library, at least, or a master's degree.
Okay. I just, I couldn't see that out here, and I thought you said before.
Yeah, if I knew which one, bachelor's.
It doesn't matter, it's okay.
Yeah. And the totals that you see in red, I think that you were, under staff totals, those are auto-calculated. I don't fill those in, so I'd have to be able to exactly be looking at.
It's a black and white copy, so we can't see that.
Yeah, on page seven, if you have the same thing.
Yeah, I think I do.
But everybody has a bachelor's degree, anyway, so.
Okay.
And one other clarification, I just want to point out, on page 18, the default, for some reason...
You don't have 18.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, all right, mine must be printed differently from yours. Under S2, it's a minor thing, total number of weeks the main library was open, so the default is usually 52, and I didn't catch that before I submitted, but it was subsequently changed with the state that we were open 37 weeks, because everybody was supposed to calculate up till the day of shutdown, which was 37 weeks. It doesn't really matter, there, you know, everybody's, but just so you know, I didn't catch it before. Once you submit it and lock it, you can't get back in and do anything. But I did submit it to the state, so they changed it on their end, but it doesn't really affect you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see that. Jean, I have a question on some of the totals for the eBooks and things. I wonder if, it says eBooks add up 12,000 something, is that a variable? Does that depend on what you're contracting to purchase?
That's what, we get some of those through the system that we pay for as part of our contract, and then we purchase others.
Okay, but it would go...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It would increase... It would increase as books were purchased, but not decrease as your contract expires?
The contract is pretty much the same every year, and as everybody adds more, we share those, too.
For a certain number of books.
Right.
So you might contract for 50.
Yeah, I have to look back and tell you, if I, off the top of my head, I don't know. It's, it's really what we.
No, it's just in general.
Part of what we pay, yeah. And then we pay, we buy some extra ones. Every library purchases their own, and then they also share some with everybody else. Those numbers didn't go down, a lot of our numbers went down because we didn't, we didn't calculate things past the 37 weeks. But in fact, we did, because we added more e-content, because that's, that was a service we could still provide. So those numbers were actually pretty high, and they were used significantly as well. So it was a remote service we were able to still provide.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a question for clarification, Jean. There was some commentary on the town site last week about, there was expressions of frustration that the library is still closed, that it's not open, and then there were some questions about the time that it opened. Is there any plan to open the library physically?
Not at this time. Even the town hall is not open. And with the fall going the way it is, I wouldn't expect it to happen for quite some time. I encourage people to contact me. It's not at this time.
Okay. Does anybody have?
I've got a couple more comments.
Yes, go ahead, Nan.
What about the summer reading program? That wasn't mentioned in the September director's report.
We didn't have one. We really, let me get my facts, we didn't have one, most libraries did not. One library I know put a lot of effort into it, and they had one family.
Oh, okay.
Didn't have it last year. We had a lot of programs scheduled that couldn't happen, and that was one of them. We did some virtual, but it wasn't the usual. One library I know put a lot of effort into it, and they had one family login, so. But, and hopefully we can next year, we don't even know that for sure.
What a shame, so many things have changed.
Yeah.
Okay, I have, I have another comment.
Sure.
On the Auburn guide that you sent to us.
Mm-hmm.
The fall newsletter. I wonder if anyone else felt the same. I thought it was a very one-sided account of our strategic plan. That, that impetus for the plan didn't come from Julie. That's really an MBLC way for libraries to look at themselves, to look forward, to look inward. Julie supported us, we're very grateful for that, but it was trustee initiative. We were the ones that decided to go ahead with a new five-year plan when our 2019 expired. And even though library staff can have credit for their participation, it really was the trustees, particularly our chairman, who spent hours on the telephone with the consultant to be sure that things were going right, to be sure that we had as much community involvement as we could.
Yeah.
I just think it wouldn't have been possible without the trustees, and not to have them mentioned was really short-sighted.
Well, my understanding, it was the directive from Julie, I believe that was even mentioned during one of the meetings when there was a question about it or something. So I mentioned it there. You wanted it in a couple of different places. It's, it's there, it was my attempt to just make sure that it was a positive approach to the strategic plan, and that it was also, you know, in the master plan, and it's out there. But I don't believe, I do, you can check with Julie, I believe it was a directive from the town manager.
I could help clarify if I can.
Yes, please.
Very.
Go ahead, Nan.
The town manager said, when we were looking for things that were in, within our jurisdiction, she said, "One of the things you can do, if you choose to do it, is a strategic plan." So it was something that the trustees could do, and then we discussed it and made a decision to go ahead and do it. But it was not directed by her, it was one of those things where she said, "Besides policy development, the strategic plan is another responsibility for the board of trustees to leave."
Mm-hmm.
So that's how that happened. But it is, I find it difficult to say much more about that. But I was, I was a little bit surprised.
You wrote that piece in the newsletter about the strategic plan, was that written by you, Jean?
Yes.
That's all.
If you find that it's different, I can write a retraction on that next time. I believe that was.
I don't think, I don't know that that, for me.
Necessary, no.
My feeling was, it looked as though the trustees had some kind of peripheral role in that process, when I think that if we removed ourselves, it would have never happened.
Right. Right, okay. Thank you.
How about clarification rather than you used, Jean?
I'll check with Julie, and if that's the case, I can write a clarification next time.
And I think I hear what the board is saying is it's not accurate, so we're asking for it to, for revision?
It's one.
Yeah, sorry.
It's one-sided. It's not complete.
I agree.
Yes, yes, what she said, I think basically was, was accurate and accountable, but to leave out trustee contribution is rather dismaying.
Yeah, well, I think when people log in, they're certainly going to see it, that's addressed right away in the strategic plan a number of times, so I apologize if you don't like the way I worded it. That's, and if, I'll check with Julie, and if you want, if there is a clarification to be made, I will be happy to do that.
I think what I'm hearing is, you know, in the spirit of diversity and inclusion, that the board wasn't included.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next, does anybody have anything else before we move to the strategic plan? Is that you?
I think I'm, I think I lost that.
Okay. So number five on the agenda is the strategic plan. As we've discussed already, the, the budget is frozen at this time, the town's budget is frozen. Does anybody have anything that you want to talk about related to the strategic plan?
I'd like to talk a little bit about, if you're ready for that, for the summary from the Sage consulting.
Yes.
Is that all right?
Yes, please.
I thought, I thought, now we've had this for a long period of time, but I think there are, the important thing in this strategic planning project lesson learned is that this is a document that should be available for a board of trustees that's going to do the next revision of the strategic plan. This, this just gives a picture of the experience that we had during this process, is evaluated by us and town manager and the library director, those were the people that were invited for the time. So I think that the, the value to me is for the next time that a strategic plan is going, because there's nothing we can do about what already happened and the results of all of that. But it can certainly be very instructive to the next board of trustees that have been through that in four years. And Mary, if it's appropriate, what I'd like to just do is make a motion to accept this review, and then it's be part of our minutes.
Would anybody like to second that motion?
I second that.
That's Suzette, very good. Can I roll call vote? Please respond, yea or nay, as to whether you support the passing of this, the acceptance of this. Matt Toth?
Yes.
Yea or nay? Yeah. Suzette, Doug?
Yea.
Nay?
Yea.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, very good. Paula Melikin? I'm going to blame my speaker for that. Paula Melikin? Did I lose you?
Her mic's still on, but her picture's gone.
Yeah. Nan Johnson?
Yea.
Okay. Paula, can you hear me? I think she lost connection. So it was approved.
She abstained then because she didn't vote? Or just write no vote?
I think, I think no vote, because I think that she didn't choose to abstain. I have a feeling she had the same technical difficulties that I had, and hopefully she'll be back.
Okay.
Moving on to the next item, printing, binding, and distribution of the Auburn Public Library strategic plan. Let's see. So Matt, can you talk about how that happened? How that, how that went? Okay.
The printing on this was supported by the town manager's office, and the binding of this was done through the library budget, through the library director. We did it in a staple, but the library supported the funding for the binding. And then the distribution was done also through the library. The library has.
Was the binding done through the funds? Was the binding done?
No, the binding was done, no, it was done from funds from the library. Paula's back, Mary.
Here we go.
So, but no problem, is, can I interrupt you, Matt, just to ask for Paula's vote?
Yes, sorry, Mary, go ahead.
Go right ahead.
No, we thought you had some technical difficulty, so we were on the roll call vote, so to accept the summary for the strategic plan. Do you vote yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea, very good.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the binding did come from the library budget, offered to have that paid for through library, and it ended up being a little bit less than we had anticipated. It was, it was supposed to be, I don't know, it was around a hundred dollars and something, but I, I think it was eighty, I forget what it was now. But at any rate, gave Jean the receipt and the additional money returned. And then the library has ten copies, each of us has a copy, Jean has a copy, has a town manager and stuff. I'm going to give, I don't know how it ended up this way, but I have at least two copies that I'll give Jean to have in the library. Maybe some can be taken out and some can be used at the library, whatever they decide at the library. So that, at least that's all done.
Okay, yeah, and just to clarify, I use state aid funds, it was, that's what's listed as petty cash, but that was what I gave to Matt, so that was paid for from state aid funds?
Oh, thank you.
Anything else, Matt?
No, no, that's, I think that unless somebody asks a question.
Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
If not, we're moving on to the trustees' questions on number six on the item, new business, how to expand the board of trustees' profile and, for public awareness on the APL website. I was going to hand that over to Nan.
Oh, I did send an example of what I, I saw on the library at Lemonster. Just happened to be browsing, and I thought, oh, I kind of like this. It gave our, you know, purpose for the trustees and our names and expiration term, which is on the Auburn site, you can get it. I don't object to moving it to the town site. I feel it's appropriate on either one. It's perhaps a little bit easier to, to find if it's on the library, right with the rest of our information, but it just was a bit more, more positive information about the board.
If I can make a comment, the new website will have tabs under staff and trustees. I certainly have no problem putting that as a sub-menu underneath it, if that's where you decide, you know, when you've written one. I think that's a good place to put it.
Thank you. And this is the website?
On, on the library website, I'm sure you could put it on the town as well, but I think it, you know, that kind of information would definitely belong on the library website, so under that.
I passed that on, Nan, to Julie, and she said, she assured me that she would put it on the, on the town website as well.
We already have trustee listing on the town website, and then right underneath that is a little aside, for more information, go to the library website, so, you know, either way, it's covered.
Right.
I'll write it up.
Great.
Do you want me to write up an example using our information?
That would be great.
Okay.
Matt, did you say something?
I'll vote for that, Nan. No, I said, I'll vote for that, Nan.
Yeah, I agree. So the next item on the agenda is the letter to and from the town manager. Does anyone have any commentary about that? I'll take that as no.
I'm hesitant, but it is, I think this is a place where I would reluctantly use the term, "it is what it is."
Right. Very good, very good.
I'm going to comment on that later, Mary, but you bring up here something that you've got on the agenda, so.
Okay, very good. So the next item on the agenda is Friends 501(c)(3), reinstatement update, bylaws to Phil Shea. I know that that was something that Jen was going to talk about. Is there anybody else that can reference? Matt, can you talk about that to the board?
Yeah, he is, he sent to me the last time I talked to him that he had one for our October meeting.
Okay.
November meeting, sorry, November.
Okay. So that'll be for next Wednesday?
Yes, next Wednesday will be on.
One, two, three, November 3rd?
Yeah, November 4th.
Oh, day after the election. Four. Okay.
The next item on the agenda is the youth survey. You know, it's something that's very important to me, but I think this is a really tough time in the schools where they're online learning. Would the team be okay if we put that off until November?
Yes.
Sure.
The next piece is diversity and inclusion policy review vote. I know that Jen sent it to the town manager, but Matt, I feel like we got an email from Julie last week about receiving it. Can you talk about that?
Yes, she was very apologetic that it came in July 20th, but she must have missed it. So she didn't get a chance to send it to town council, which she did when she found that email. And we, I think she said that she was going to try to have an answer for us by our November meeting.
Okay, great. Great, thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is the strategic plan tactics. Is it okay with the team if we discuss that in the next meeting, November 4th meeting? How we're going to process and go above that? Okay.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, um, next, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. The next one is the trustee handbooks pages distributed. Does everybody have a copy?
Yes.
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 Yeah. Okay, very good. And, um-
I think that's the last, excuse me, Mary. On those, I think that's, it's updated to the very last one that MBLC sent out.
Okay.
They stopped doing it at one point. I forget exactly when, but, um, that's the last one of the updates for trustees.
Thanks, Matt.
Very good. Uh, for the next items, I just want to put context. Um, Jean and Julie were kind enough to meet with me prior to me taking over the, you know, official first day of the, um, chairperson role. And a couple of things that came up in this meeting regarding inclusion tonight and just the, the need to have, be able to have productive discussions are something that Julie and Jean and I talked about, um, at that meeting. And Julie suggested that we, um, take a look at the code of conduct that's used by the selectmen. And I, I, I sent that to everybody today just so that you'd have a week to look over it before we discuss it, but, and whether or not we would like to adopt that code of conduct. The other piece is something that's, that's really my suggestion because I feel like, I feel that we could be more inclusive and constructive in terms of really having open dialogue about if, if a problem comes our way or if there's a concern or a criticism that we would have, it wouldn't feel as though we're sort of debating the issue, but rather problem solving. So I sent that to everybody today, um, and I'd like to discuss it and consider adopting it in our next meeting. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November fourth at six thirty PM. Does anybody have any questions before I motion to adjourn?
Is it going to be at six thirty, Jen?
Six thirty, that's correct.
That's good for Jen.
Yeah.
I have a motion. There are a lot of attachments. If anybody wants me to print them out and you can pick them up at curbside, just email me, um, like we did before. It looks like a lot of, you know, if you don't have access to a printer, if you want a hard copy, um, just send me an email and I'll be at curbside for Nan, okay?
That would always be me, yeah.
Jean, thank you so much for that offer. Uh, so do we, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Do we have a second motion?
A second, Matt.
Second.
Then I'll look forward to seeing you all next Wednesday. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.